Good evening, welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, January 24. If you are watching live on Cablevision, Verizon, or webcast at PCTV.org, PCTV76.org, you're welcome to call in with any comments or questions at 769-1677. Our next work session is a week from today, Monday, January 31, at 7:00 PM, followed by a work session Monday, February 7, at 7:00 PM. And then our next regular meeting is Monday, February 14, at 8:00 PM, with a work session at 7:00. Sorry to start a little late. We had a number of things going on in work session and an executive session talking about tax grievances with our assessor. We had on the agenda, our assessor Jim Timmings, talking about equalization rates and residential assessment ratios, but because we have a lot on the agenda tonight, a lot of people here for the leaf blower discussion, we decided to hold that for a future meeting and you'll see that if it's a subject of interest, showing up on agenda soon. So, this sequence here in the agenda had us having a public hearing on making Parkway Terrace a one-way street, but I think the large majority of the audience are here for the discussion on proposed leaf blower regulations. So let's switch the sequence to put the leaf blower discussion up front. The background to that is that members of the Conservation Advisory Committee came to us and requested that we consider a seasonal ban on leaf blowers, and they provided us with quite a bit of information about it. That exists in some form or another in seventeen communities, I guess, in Westchester, including New Rochelle, White Plains, Pelham, Scarsdale, Larchmont, Merranick, Greenberg, Bronzeville, Pelham Manor, Yonkers, Merranick Village, Rye, Hastings, Tarrytown, and Dobbs Ferry. So, the discussion tonight is not a discussion of a resolution. We've made no resolution, there's no vote tonight. What we propose to do was invite anybody who's interested on the subject to come and let us know what they think. We've had quite a stack of comments from people in the form of emails, and I'll summarize those perhaps at the end of the discussion, but for starters, we have Lisa Brown from the Conservation Group ready to make an initial presentation to talk to us about the issues that they presented. Their intro?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
So, we'll get out of the way here of the screen and turn the light off.
Lisa, do you want to use the microphone?
Sure. Linda, there's no audio going in.
This is all?
All right. Brief pause for the technical difficulties.
We should have kept them on the phone until we figured out whether or not...
Want me to call somebody else?
Let's slide this chair back there.
About to do a video on cordless, I'm gonna have to get it out on tape. What channel would they want me to? I don't know. I hope they got it up. Up, 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 up. Village Board meeting. I don't get this either. The sound is working on Verizon. The sound is working on Verizon. It's working on Verizon.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Obviously I don't have cable, so that's all you guys. Thank you very much for calling in.
That's not the issue. She has a commercial for Verizon. She may be over there.
Cablevision's punishing us.
Put this in the darkness if that's okay?
Okay.
Can I put the back lights on? We don't have control over anything that...
It's okay. I don't, I think it's okay. If you can see this screen, I think we're good. So, I'm gonna start. So I'm Lisa Brown, I'm from the Conservation Advisory Council. I'm really pleased that the Board has given us an opportunity to share with you what we've learned about leaf blowers in the area. We've actually done a lot of research. There's both the Conservation Advisory Council and some concerned residents of Pleasantville. We've actually contacted some of the boards in the other towns, some of the councilmen. We've talked to conservationists in the area. We've got some letters from the medical community regarding leaf blowers, and we've talked to some landscapers. So, we actually learned a lot. I have to be frank with you, there were a lot of issues regarding leaf blowers that I had no idea. I don't think most people would unless, you know, you happen to go down this avenue. So I'm really, I think it's really an opportunity to share this information, and I just hope people will be open-minded. So we've given the Board two proposals. The first is to not permit either gas-powered or electric leaf blowers, basically during the summer, so from April 30th to October 15th. And this is the time when it's really the most important not to be using leaf blowers because of the warm weather and the dryness. But people are gonna give you a lot more information about that. Another alternative is to not, is to only permit them in the fall, which is when we pick up the leaves. And this would be clearly a bigger restriction, but I believe after you see some of the reasons why we want to do this, that this may be the, this would be certainly the one we would like to see. As Peter mentioned, there's seventeen municipalities that we know of. This is a list of fifteen. Since we got this list, Takahoe and Sleepy Hollow have joined the ranks. So, this is not new for this area at all. This has been done and it's been affected. Does someone have a question?
If you look through municipalities, did you not have this kind of restriction?
No. I mean, I think you can infer. I mean, I think this is fairly complete.
What's the matter? How many communities in the county might...
So there's seventeen. Oh, how, I don't know exactly how many are there in the county. It looks to me like it's kind of coming up from the south. So as you look, you'll see it started in Yonkers and down in the lower part of the county, and it's moving up.
More urban, smaller minority to...
Well, I mean, Sleepy Hollow just passed it. You know, I think there's definitely communities that have large properties. Rye just passed it not that long ago, so they're both kinds.
Can I suggest that Lisa go through her presentation?
Yeah, yeah, let me go through the presentation and then we'll answer questions. Okay. But just as an aside, there's also across the country, a lot of different communities in Los Angeles where air pollution is a really big problem, there's outright ban on leaf blowers. And I just think it's interesting to think, you know, when you start to see the pollution and the reasons for the possible restrictions on the leaf blowers, you know, are we, do we want to wait until it's hard to breathe here? And whatever. Okay. So, there are four main reasons, and I'm actually gonna share this presentation with some of the other people who've been working with, so they're gonna tell you a lot more detail. But basically, there are two, several of them have to do with health. It has to do with pollution. It's basically, I think it's important to break it up into the pollution due to the gas-powered engines and the pollution due to the blowing, because even whether or not you have a gas-powered engine, or you have a cleaner gas-powered engine or electric engine, there's still pollution from the actual blowing that's taking place. There's a serious noise issue. I think a lot of people feel very differently about the noise, but I think it's important that we're aware that some people are really disturbed by the noise. And there's even serious health issues there, particularly for the people operating the machines. And lastly, there are very serious concerns environmentally for why we're doing this. And so, I'm gonna now pass the podium over to Don Williman, who's gonna give you a lot more detail about some of these issues.
Thank you, Lisa.
Do you want the lights back on?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking with the lights down? No, we're gonna still use the light.
Yeah. Does this work for everybody, this light? Okay. Yeah.
No.
Oh, should I go back? I'm sorry. Yeah, we just want to touch the high points. This is a pretty brief meeting. There's an awful lot of literature out there. Like Lisa, I was quite surprised when I started looking into the issue and discussing it with other people. Lisa and some of the other members of the CAC did quite a bit of research. I thought, like probably most of the people in this room, it's just about some nuisance in my neighborhood. Yeah, it's loud, I can't wait till they're finished, like everybody else. They have to carry on, they do their work, but I can't stand the noise, but that's just that, for me. But then when you start looking at it, you see, we live in a community, and actually in the next slide, Westchester does not really meet most of the environmental regulations for particulate and some of the smog chemicals already, but I'm jumping ahead of myself. The mower, the leaf blower motors, the gas-powered ones, particularly the two-cycle ones, emit non-regulated amounts of smog-causing chemicals into the air. And also, if you take a look at the second paragraph, the amount of pollutants that come out of one of these, there's different statistics, you can go on the web, you can see them yourself, but take a look at that slide. An automobile emits over the length of the distance it drives at. A leaf blower's in one neighborhood. That's what we're breathing. Whatever we put out, that's what we breathe. But that's just for the emissions from the machine itself. Okay. Whoops. We went too far. Okay. We have a lot of people with asthma in the community. This is nationwide, this is not specific to here, and it's a growing trend. What happens, particularly as Lisa pointed out, in the summertime, when it's dry, you have all the dust is going up into the atmosphere, it stays suspended. You have all the leaf particle, the feces, everything, it's up in the air. That's what we're breathing. So it's not just about the noise, which is a temporary phenomenon. When the work is over, noise is over, we're all happy. But what we're putting in the air, what we're breathing, what our children are breathing, what the elderly are breathing, that is a greater issue for most of us. What we tried doing right here is just bringing out some of these factoids from a number of different agencies. California, like usual, in environmental matters is way ahead of everyone, as Lisa pointed out, they've got total bans. Well, we're not looking for that, that's not what we're talking about. This is something very simple. Try to reduce, not go over the brink, on something that really can be dealt with. And leaf blowers seems to be that type of issue to many of us. But now we're talking about the noise. It's measurable, but some people have discussed on the websites, when I monitor the listserv, the Pleasantville listserv also, and said, "Well, you can have the noise ordinance take care of it." Well, the offices don't have the time of day to go chasing people with a calibrated noise meter. That's never gonna work. We all know that. They've got other things to do, we don't want to burden them with that. But the thing is, we know already that it's an issue with the community. Plenty of people work at home, we have housekeepers, we have people who, you know, elderly and young. It's a quality-of-life issue on top of the health issues that we already discussed. We have night workers who need to sleep during the day, so it is an issue that involves people. Part of the concern is, regardless of the time of day, sometimes in some neighborhoods, these machines go on for one, two, and three hours. It's not just five minutes, clean up, and we're off. I've spoken to some people who are in this room, as well as others that I work with in their neighborhoods, and they repeat, they cannot enjoy their community for the time that these workers are there. So it's really a quality-of-life issue for them. And also, the last point right here is, myself, I thought, well, if you just restrict it to a certain time of day, maybe that would take care of it as far as the noise is concerned. But take a look at the slide. A lot of people are at home, you cannot ignore that. Okay? EPA has statistics on Westchester County, and take a look at this. I mean, I was pretty surprised when I saw this. This has all been researched, not by myself, I'm just reading this off, but the members of the CAC have done some homework here. I didn't realize how polluted the air is here, but I go back, and in the summertime in particular, you hear about these alerts. They say it's not even healthy to go jogging outside, the pollution is so bad sometimes. We have a lot of automobiles, we're close to New York City. That's the cost of living close to New York City. Do we really need to tip the balance by having the emissions from two-cycle and four-cycle engines just to make a tidy lawn? Is that what's really worth it for our community? Asthma, we mentioned that before, there's a number of statistics right here, and also, yeah, we're almost finished here. There's a number of statistics, and also just references from doctors who are more than willing to say, "This is not what we need to be breathing." I mean, that's, that's how I translate, I'll let you read it yourself. This is from Mount Sinai Hospital, the dusts and particulates, the gas engines, I'm sorry. I think the next speaker, Doug McDonald, is going to get in a little more detail about some of the specifics of what comes out of the engines. Okay?
Well, I too want to thank the Board and the Mayor for giving us an opportunity to express ourselves here. In terms of health issues, Don has pretty much discussed, presented to you, the nasties in the pollution mix, and I'm, in essence, reiterating his points. The high velocity of air from these machines has the power to scour, like it, all kinds of fine particulates that make up the soils that barely hold the grass in our lawns in place. Now, we're talking about silicates from clay and what have you, organic dust, molds, mold spores, pollens, decaying plant material. Many of these are allergens, which, as Don indicated, exacerbate asthma and issues of respiratory deficiency, people having a hard time breathing, just, you know, old age and bronchitis. And in addition, making airborne pathogens and parasites from animal feces. We don't need this stuff blowing around for us to breathe. All right. Does that help? Since many of the backpack machines are powered by two-cycle gas engines, as Don pointed out, a major component of the gas is vaporized top cylinder oil, which is mixed into gasoline to lubricate these machines, with a high percentage of unburned gasoline and partially burned hydrocarbons, plus a fair amount of soot. You know, we don't need to breathe soot. And this is a troublesome cocktail for children, and those with compromised breathing. And the particulate materials, and this is very distressing, can lodge in the ovilli, the air sacs of our lungs, you know, as in black lung disease in coal miners and brown lung of cotton mill workers. They found this particularly in the south. Let's see, we need the next slide. All right, I'll hold with that. The psychological impact of exposure to the persistent whine of these machines as they are used to blow grass clippings cannot be ignored. Don pointed this out very well. Scientists have been studying the effects of the high level of noise in our civil environments, and persistent noise from leaf blowers have been shown to damage irreversibly the delicate hair cells that enable hearing, especially in young people. Today, too many of us are now demonstrating significant hearing loss. When I was a youth, I used a barely muffled early rotary gas lawnmower to my current problem situation. My hearing has been wrecked by that experience, and I didn't appreciate it. The following is a list of medical environmental professionals who have expressed their concerns and alarms regarding the impact of leaf blowers on the health of the young and elderly in our county. Let me see, there he is. I would like to underscore the role of Dr. Philip Landrigan of Mount Sinai Medical School in his significant involvement in this health problem and generally the impact of the larger soup of toxins all of us are exposed to. He is internationally recognized for his work in this area. Let me turn this over to Helen, who is going to speak on the environmental issues.
One piece of this is the effect of blowing, not blowing leaves, but just blowing garden items around, we'll say. As you can see, you get increased soil erosion when you're using a leaf blower, especially on dry ground, and that in turn leads to increased stormwater runoff. We have an issue in Westchester County of having maxed out our stormwater systems. You can actually, if you're blowing grass off your lawns, you're actually removing natural fertilizer, and then you'll find you'll have to apply some, in some form, fertilizer or compost to restore nutrients. One of, another impact is less water retention around plants and trees because of the lack of mulch from natural fallen leaves and so on. Roots are exposed, and a big problem is decreased wildlife habitat. I'm not talking about deer, I'm talking about small wildlife, such as birds and insects. We all love to see butterflies, we all like to hear songbirds, and we are ruining our hedgerows, and in effect, you know, your shrub plants around your property really don't need to be, have their leaves blown away from them, they need to have some kind of decaying matter under there for wildlife to thrive. And also, because we have so many leaves in Pleasantville, we have a very, we have the luxury of the village crew coming around and vacuuming or clawing them up and taking them off, and although they do turn them into leaf compost, which is wonderful, that actually entails quite a bit of impact all on its own, and carbon emissions, just driving the trucks around and doing all of that. Another way to deal with grass clippings is to use a mulching mower, and I know almost all mulching, all mowers are mulching mowers now, and most people do it. I think really the issue is here is not to be blowing your grass around on the driveway or patio to get it off, it really doesn't matter, a little bit of grass here and there. Same with leaves. At the beginning of fall, it's pretty easy to run your mower over leaves and mulch them. You run it once, run it a week later. We didn't even rake this year, we had no leaves on our property, after we'd run it over with a mower a few times. You don't need to buy fertilizer, you don't need to, I mean, I moved some leaves underneath bushes and stuff, you don't need to buy mulch then to do that. Less soil erosion, less water runoff, and your lawn actually might improve by using its own cycle of life to fertilize it, and the wildlife habitat will improve. You can rake some under your flower beds for mulch, you could sweep, use a push broom on driveways. But really, the message here is about how, as a population, we've become somewhat obsessed with manicured properties, and I think the time is to step back a little bit. I mean, it's lovely to have a very attractive yard and flowers and so on, but I think that it doesn't need to be absolutely picture-perfect, and I think that as soon as a crew or even a homeowner walks away from a few bits of blown grass, they're all blown back again. And I think we just need to say, you know, this is where we live, and we need to make space for wildlife and for our communities to enjoy a healthier lifestyle. This is a little program that we looked into last year. The National Wildlife Federation actually certifies backyard habitats. It's a program they have going just to encourage particularly children to recognize the value of making a space for wildlife. So, there's five components, providing food, water, some kind of cover for animals, and a place to raise young, and use as few or no pesticides, preferably as possible. And there are places like school in Rye, where the high school made a project out of creating a wildlife habitat. You can certify a backyard, you can certify a school, and you can certify a whole community if a certain amount, like a hundred homeowners come together and say, "I'll do these things." This is a, this is kind of the light moment in the presentation. We found quite a few videos on the internet, and one of the CAC members, Libby, came across this particular one, which is supposed to be humorous, not taken too seriously.
It shows the effect of this.
How did we do that?
She must have been very worried.
No.
One last slide. Mike, I can speak to this. A lot of the concerns, particularly of business owners rather than homeowners, is that, you know, we legislate too much perhaps, and we try and rein things in, but there are precedents to this, you know. Years ago, we didn't have catalytic converters, or even before that, mufflers on cars, and, you know, across the country, every state now requires catalytic converters, and we're all healthier for it, and we all appreciate that we had to pay a little bit more money for that to happen. Sometimes we even have to buy more gas for this to run smoothly, but it's a great step forward in limiting our environmental impact. And I think we need to bite that off and say, you know, if it costs a little bit more to do this, then we'll do it. But quite frankly, all the communities I've spoken with, it hasn't cost any more. No landscape business has gone out of business, and people haven't increased their rates due to lack of being able to use a leaf blower. Thank you.
Get it twice, Patty, is that...
Yes.
Thank you all for that. As I mentioned, we got a stack of emails, and I'll touch on them afterwards, but lots of you I know have comments you'd like to add to the record, so anyone who'd like to speak is welcome to. We ask that you give us your name and your address for the record, and let us know your thoughts on the spectrum of issues that you've just heard about.
I'm not speaking, so... Once they come up, feel free. I'm just trying to adjust this thing. I guess it's okay like that.
No takers? Come on.
Question?
Yeah.
My name is Rich Hartman, I live at 31 Bedford Road, with five mostly wonderful kids. And the first question I'd like to ask is, if anyone has any extra time, the wildlife, I have never seen so many chipmunks, squirrels, raccoons, coyotes living in my barns since I'm living here 20 years. I don't know what the impact is on the wildlife, but my real question is this. When does the legislation and the regulating get to the point where leaf blowers, lawn mowers, my kids' cycle, the noise related to just general construction? I work eight in the morning till eight at night. I can't do anything except on the weekend. I don't want to use a saw in my house, so now I'm gonna get regulated with an electric saw because of the noise of it outside. So my general question is this, when do we start to say, granted, we're living close to the city, there are going to be things that are gonna drift up here, but the regulation is where we got to, when did this just become realistic?
I'm gonna answer that. I mean, how often do you use someone?
You need to, nobody can hear you at home if you're not at the mic. Can you figure, give us your name and address?
Jeff Kerfer, 24 Grandview. You probably use your chainsaw, I don't know, once a month. This past spring, I was, I'm fortunate enough to be able to be home in the afternoons. I'd sit outside on a nice beautiful day in May or June, and I would be driven inside, an army of leaf blowers would show up. There'd be three, four people, and they're basically blowing the street, they're blowing the sidewalk, they're blowing the driveway, they're blowing the parking lot. It seemed fairly pointless, and I mean, I'd be driven inside by the noise, and it's gotten abusive. I mean, if everybody was using chainsaws on a daily basis and driving people inside, sure, I understand that, but that's not what's happening. The leaf blowers have gotten to the point where it's pretty much every day, and it's, you know, five, six hours a day, no matter where you are in town, you can't avoid the sound of it. I rake leaves. I, I mean, I'm actually convinced that three guys with three rakes and a tarp can do a lawn as fast as three guys with leaf blowers. But set that aside for a moment... But set that aside for a moment, in the time when there's, when there's not a lot of leaves on the ground, it's, it's, it's a simple quality of life issue, it's like an easy fix. It's like, just don't use the leaf blowers, cut out the noise, cut out the particulates, cut out the pollution, and allow people to like just live outside and not have this noise everywhere constantly. Okay, I mean, I don't have anything against the landscape community, you guys work hard and deserve to make a living like everybody else, but if the village decides to switch to hybrid cars or electric cars as an environmental thing, do we worry about the impact on the service stations, the gas stations in town that aren't going to get our business? I mean, when we're, when we're deciding what to do with the MLA property, do we, do we decide on what to do with it based on how it's going to impact our schools and the traffic and things like that, or do we worry about the contracts of the electricians that are going to lose business by, because we're not going to build condos there? I mean, the, the financial impact on a, a, a single business that it's impacting is not really the greater good, I mean, this is, this is a quality of life issue for the citizens of the town. I mean, we can, we can, with, with one stroke of a pen, basically make it more pleasant to live in our town. I mean, it, it, it's pretty simple, you know, go ahead.
Hold on, whoa, 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 whoa.
We're not here to talk about lawn mowers tonight, we're talking about leaf blowers.
Excuse me, excuse me, we need, if you have something to say, you need to say it at the podium and wait your turn, we're not going to devolve into a free for all, thank you.
I mean, you can take this as far as you want, I mean, people are composting, people want to do this, but there's plenty of environmental people that want to do more green things, whatever. Okay, what's on the table right now, and quite frankly, I think that the leaf blower issue has come about because the, the amount of people that have used leaf blowers has grown exponentially. Fifteen years ago, this was not happening. Fifteen years ago, people weren't using leaf blowers in May and June and July for, I mean, basically nothing, they mow and then they blow the, they blow the grass clippings back onto the lawn, I mean, it's something you can do with a broom and a rake, you can, you can solve that issue, it's not really that big of a deal. Get rid of the leaf blowers in non-leaf season, and everybody, the day-to-day people are going to be much less impacted by the pollution, by the noise, by just the abusiveness of those machines. The guys who use the leaf blowers, they have, they, they have noise-reducing earphones, they have earplugs in, sometimes they wear masks on their face, they know that it's, it's an issue, okay? And I don't think it's going to impact your business that much. I mean, I could be wrong, but I, but I don't think it will, and, and even if it doesn't, the greater good is the quality of life in town. Thank you.
Thank you, correct.
Good evening, Board. I'm Mark DeFabi, I live at 85 Woodland Road, I run a landscape business in Pleasantville. Okay, there's a lot of points to hit on here. One question I have is, will there be a future meeting for people to present an opposing view of this?
Well, certainly, A, you can do that now, B, if you'd like to do so in a more formal way, you'd be welcome to do so. What we're talking about now is just essentially airing out the issues, and if we were to actually propose such a thing, there'd be a resolution for it and a required public hearing.
Okay.
So you've got several bites at the apple in the event that it continues further, but I add to that, if you'd like to make a structured presentation, just let us know, and we'll find a place on the agenda for you and let everyone know.
Because most of us didn't even hear about this until about a week and a half ago.
That's fine.
I'm sure, they've been working on their presentation for a long time. Just hitting on some of the topics, there are already in place noise and emissions regulations by the federal government on these machines, okay? All the newer machines are regulated. Many of the restrictions on the blowers that are in place in towns right now were in place before the new regulations were in place. As far as particles and airborne, you know, particles and airborne are not going to be going from one end of a block to another end of a block. Also, by leaving leaves around properties, around houses, in beds, you know, mold can cause up against the houses, it leaves areas for rodents to live and habitat. Also, the length of time during this, during the part of the season that they want to restrict blowers, the blowers are used very little. The, the longest period of time that blowers are used are on the spring cleanups and the fall cleanups. And the spring cleanups in our area, they could be snow-packed well into the end of April sometimes. So your cleanups are going to be getting dragged out into May sometimes with, with the amount of accounts that you might have. So restricting it to April 30th, you know, and then you're trying to do cleanups without any equipment, you know, would be very hard to do. In the, in, during the course of the growing season, early spring, late spring and early summer, when the grass is growing at a tremendous rate, you cut the grass, and Westchester County wants you to let the grass fly so that it decays back into the lawn, because grass blades are 90% water, and it has nutrients in it for the soil, it has nitrogen for the grass, so you have to, you can fertilize the lawn less. But when it's growing so thick and so fast, the grass clumps, and when it's damp, it clumps, and there'll be huge clumps all over the lawn, all over the sidewalks, all over the driveways. We're not collecting these grass clippings and taking them away because town dumps do not want grass clippings, all they want are leaves and branches. So what we do, as far as landscapers go, you disperse them into the lawn, you're breaking up the clumps, you know, if you're on a property, you're going to use a backpack blower the last five minutes, if I'm doing a property or if my men are doing a property for a half hour, you're going to use a backpack blower for the last five minutes. If you have 10 houses on a block, yeah, you know, you might be going from house to house with backpack blowers, and it might seem longer, but technically, you're only using a backpack blower for like the last five, 10 minutes on a house. As a landscaper, you don't want a backpack blower on your back, you know, with the noise and everything for a length of time, you want to be, use it, get the property done, get on to the next job. It's efficient. As far as, as far as expense, in lawn maintenance, it's a very, very low profit margin, okay? So everything cuts into the profit on, on lawn maintenance. Putting three men with a tarp raking leaves, and, I mean, raking grass clippings is a lot more labor-intensive than one person just walking quickly over a lawn or a sidewalk or a driveway and dispersing them, making them disappear back into the lawn so they can decay, put nitrogen back into the grass so you can fertilize less. And like I said, we're not going to, we don't collect the grass clippings because the dumps do not want them, okay, because of the smell and the way they decay. As far as soil erosion, like I said, in the, in the summer, you hardly even use leaf blowers. It's the last couple of minutes on a property, just to, just to any little grass clippings that are around. Workers don't want to do more work on somebody's property, they want to get the job done, move on to the next. They don't want to have a backpack blower on their back and just standing there, the way it sounds is that they're standing there for hours on end just with a backpack blower and making noise, it's not the case. I mean, as far as comparing, you know, California's environmental regulations to the rest of the country, I mean, and California has gotten itself into problems with some of their regulations, you know, over-regulating businesses and, and builders and all kinds of things like that. California's on its verge of bankruptcy right now. Having police having to have to go around also enforcing these laws and restrictions puts more stress on the police force. If they want, if, if we're not using backpack blowers to disperse the grass and we're using bags on the mowers to collect the grass clippings, then they're going to go into those paper bags, they're going to go at the curb side, and now sanitation is going to have to pick up those bags. It's going to put more pressure on sanitation and more cost to the town. And to leave all of the leaves on the property during the course of the season that was suggested, I mean, the property's going to be a disaster after a couple of years. You know, that, you know, people are proud to maintain their properties, whether they have a landscaper doing it or they're doing it themselves, that's their biggest investment in their life. So, you know, if you're not allowed to maintain that biggest investment that you ever invested in to a certain way that you want to, I, I just think it's, I think it's overstepping Right now, you can only use backpack blowers during certain times of the days, there's noise restrictions and regulations that are in place. You know, I, I know they're saying that there's emissions problems, but again, that's regulated by the federal government. There could be some restrictions where you can only use equipment during certain hours of the day, you know, but that law is already in place. There are landscapers, I see them, you know, they're probably working on the side, I see guys out there at eight o'clock at night during the weekdays, but those are people that are working on the side, they have another job or something during the day, I think that's obnoxious, I don't support that. I don't support guys working out on a Sunday making noise, but homeowners have no choice, they have to do that on a Saturday or Sunday. So, you know, I, I just, you know, those are just a few of the things that I can remember to hit on here, but in the future, I'd like to have another meeting like this so we, we would have enough time to, you know, bring more of our opinions across. I don't want to hold anybody else up if they want to get up here and talk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Stephen Harrigan, I live at 157 Mountain Road, and I also have property at 150 Sarls Lane. I'm here not as a landscaper, I'm here as a village resident who is probably one of the last people in the village who maintains his own property. And I take care of everything from cutting the lawns to blowing the leaves to blowing the snow, whatever needs to be done. And the regulations to me, strike me as an infringement on my rights as a property owner. I don't see why leaf blowers are any different than any of the other types of equipment that I need to use to maintain my property. It happens that somebody suggested that we rake leaves, well, personally, I had an injury, I was splitting wood years ago, I separated my clavicle and my sternum, and I can't rake anymore, so I use my blower not only to blow my leaves, but also with all of the windstorms we have, we get a lot of debris down, and I have a big pine tree in my yard and it drops needles all the time. So I clear my walkways, I clear, pick up debris after a storm, and I use the blower periodically. Certainly, I don't believe enough to disturb my neighbors, at least nobody's come over and told me that I disturb them. But I also use a log splitter, I heap my house with wood, so I split wood. So I have many different devices that I use on my property, and to me, to regulate this device is overstepping the bounds of what makes sense in a village. When I looked at the map of the villages that are regulating, they're not villages around Pleasantville, they're villages to the south of the county. I also think that the comment about if it affects business, so what, is not a good, good comment in this economy because many businesses are suffering, and although this is not my business, I do this for myself, I still think that anything that impacts a business right now negatively is a bad move. Furthermore, you know, I don't think that we need more regulations, there's more regulations right now than are being enforced anyway. The county passed regulations to regulate vehicles sitting and idling, and certainly they're, they're equally a source of pollution. I can tell you that there's a Westchester County Beeline bus that sits right out here in front, right across from Village Hall, not 50 feet from the police station, every morning, and idles and idles and idles. I've spoken to the driver, he told me he doesn't shut it off because it might not restart, but we have regulations, we have police, nobody's enforcing these regulations, so God help me, you know, regulating leaf blowers in Pleasantville is like, you know, chasing a grain of sand on a beach. I mean, please, don't do that to us.
Diane Heine, 20 Guyon Street. I have to say, I know a number of people who have never used leaf blowers on their property, and I've never used leaf blower on my property, and I would be, I would be hard pressed to say that their property or my property is a disaster. I, I don't quite buy that part. Secondly, you know, I can appreciate the, you know, for people maintaining their own yards who need to use leaf blower for whatever physical issues they may have, I can appreciate that. I don't see that there's a need for three people or four people all at the same time blowing one yard five different directions with five different decibel levels going, that to me seems excessive. It seems excessive that every single particle, every single thing needs to be blown into the atmosphere. I think that, you know, landscapers have their place and everything has its place, but I think we need to look at the excessive nature of what has gone on with the leaf blowers. And so it seems to me that if there's a way to address the excessiveness of it, that would be the direction to go. So maybe only one leaf blower on a property at a time would seem to me to be a reasonable regulation. Or I, personally, I'm all for just not having them at all, I think there's enough environmental and health reasons not to, and why have it if it's detrimental to a large portion of the population or even some portion of the population? I don't, yeah, and so why add more things that really aren't terribly necessary? We lived without them for how many hundreds of years before we got to these points? I can't say that anybody's yard was a disaster, really. So I, I'm, what I want to address is the excessive nature of it, and the fact that if there are significant reasons not to have them, why have them?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bill Siobhan, I lived on Sarls Lane. I am all for saving the environment and doing whatever we can to protect it and to protect our children in the future and grandchildren. I have not heard from anybody on the floor, I've, I've read some, you know, hazards about leaf blowers and what it brings, puts into the air, what it blows from the ground, but I have not heard anything but opinions that we have a homeowner who's home during the day and it's infringing, infringing on his, you know, rights to enjoy his property, somebody else who said we did without it for hundreds of years, well, we did without cars, we did without toilets, we did without refrigerators, we did without everything hundreds of years ago. But this is modern society. I'm not a landscaper, but I do enjoy the services because I work two jobs, so it's a service being provided to me. And yes, I do enjoy a manicured piece of property. You said before, I know you made a comment before when somebody brought up another piece of equipment, you said this is, we're talking about leaf blowers, but the gentleman before brought up chainsaws and you didn't make a mention about that. My question is, and I'm going to say this, is we're talking about leaf blowers, but I, I didn't hear anybody say they hear just as many lawn mowers as they do leaf blowers. So where does it go from leaf blowers to lawn mowers to snow blowers? I can tell you another one, I know everybody loves their dog. I don't have a dog, I don't love everybody's dog, but their dogs, their dogs are all over my property, and somebody else walking their dog extends their long leashes so their dog can sniff all over my leg and whatever, I don't appreciate that, and I don't appreciate having to clean anybody's, you know, business on my lawn. I also don't appreciate that I have to hear dogs bark, barking all day long on a Sunday morning early. You know what, you're a conservation group, I suggest rethinking some things and going after that. Thank you.
Good evening. Donald Benz, Washington Avenue. I've been in landscape business since 1988, and I've been
Good evening. Donald Benz, Washington Avenue. I've been in landscape business since 1988, and I've been a Pleasantville resident since 1995, own property. In the mid 1990s, some towns in Westchester have been restricted to use leaf blowers in their communities. But since then, power equipment has come a long way, and to meet federal requirements by low emissions and lower decibels. Westchester requires all landscapers to use updated low emissions and leaf blower since January 1st, 2009. My company does that as well. And they confiscate your equipment if you're not up to par. Leaf bar, leaf blowers are a vital machine that both landscapers and homeowners use to perform weekly maintenance, spring cleanups, storm damage, for curb appeal. I have, I have literature here that shows everything, and anybody's welcome to come over here and take, that shows where the equipment has gone through the years. And years ago, there were blowers that were astronomically loud, but now, everything is down to a certain law. Westchester County, as of the 1st of January 2009, requires that. As a business owner, I decide what kind of purchase, equipment that I use to purchase for my company to service my clientele, not a committee. So I'm against a blower ban in Westchester County and in the Village of Pleasantville. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Christine Simonogrislaw. I live on Vascor Avenue. I personally work at home, and I hear leaf blowers very often during the day. I live across from an apartment building complex, and they start Monday morning, sharp, eight o'clock, start leaving, blowing leaves, even if there don't seem to be any, so I think they're blowing around stuff to make the lawn look neat, which I don't necessarily appreciate because I do think if you leave leaves on your lawn, at least a few, to start with, I don't think the garden gets devastated. I myself read up on leaf mulching myself last fall, and I actually tried it. I put my mulcher, mulching equipment in my lawn mower. I mulched my lawn, all the leaves were gone. I have a neighbor who, for some reason, doesn't rake his lawn until the last leaf has fallen from a big tree on his front lawn, which I always admire because we all around him scour to try to have every leaf removed at least every weekend so our lawn looks green. And I use them sort of as my guinea pig. I said to him, his name is Peter, "Peter, I'm going to take my, my lawnmower to your lawn," and he had a lot of leaves. You can imagine a big tree on his, on his little, well, not a big property. So I said, "I'm going to mulch that lawn, and I want to see how that turns out." And he was like, "Okay, go ahead. I mean, if I don't like it, you rake it all up." I'm like, "I'm all for it." So I took my lawnmower over it, and I, he has about a front lawn, especially double, double this area, and I mulched it. And you could not even see that there were leaves on it. I was like, I was like, "I have to take a picture." I didn't take a picture, unfortunately. I would have loved to show everyone what it looked like. You didn't even see there were leaves on it. So I think, I understand that some people are against not using leaf blowers. I personally work from home, I'm annoyed by it. I'm annoyed by it how extensively it is being used by people who really think they have to pick up every last leaf, whether it's leaf, whether it's, it's grass. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think personally that it's environmentally friendly at all. I think we can live with mulched lawns. I think we can leave with, live with leaves in our, in our flower beds. I think it's environmentally friendly. I think we all could maybe try to rethink what yard care really is about. I think maybe you will have an edge and an advantage by rethinking your business. Maybe you will get more business by saying, "We try to stay green. We have alternatives. We actually can take a rake." Maybe you create actually more jobs by employing more people because you have to rake. I'm not for a total ban, but I certainly think, we definitely have to consider how often we use it. I think during the fall, for some people, for elderly people, I think leaf blowers are convenient. I totally agree with that. I don't use a lawn service. I, I, I work in my own garden and look after my flowers. Some other people don't want to do it, don't have the time, I understand, but the leaf blower is a nuisance for me personally. I work from home because of the noise. I think we can start leaf mulching. I think it's a, it's a very good advantage to, for all of us to do that on our, on our own properties, and to look into that and not to shy away from it because it's inconvenient or it doesn't look immediately great. Because if I look in the, in the spring, you don't see the leaves, it, it's, it's gone. It saves, you know, the environment to some respect. These are my thoughts. Thank you.
How you doing? Reed Walsh, Sixtito Lane, Pleasantville. My question to you with getting rid of backpack blower, 7:30 in the morning, a backpack blower cleans in front of this building. Parks Department uses it. Backpack blower cleans up the cigarette butts that everybody's kids drop in front of the high school. Backpack blower and a leaf blower, one with wheels is a four-stroke. That is like your car motor. Puts out very little emissions. A two-stroke now has a oil they call a low potash, less emissions. You could ban the two-stroke, let's say not ban, lessen the amount of two-stroke hours, and the four-strokes put out no more emissions than the cop cars sitting in front of BP idling, doing coffee. It's all the same relevance, smaller motor, less emissions, and you're trying to condone and get rid of what you guys use to clean all the parks and all the ballfields that we've spent millions of dollars on to keep clean? So you have to think that you people need it as much as the homeowner that I need it on the weekends when I only have time to do my lawn. And I'll be honest with you, it's amazing. The neighbors that complain about the leaf blowers are the very first person to say, "Hey, can you come over here and do my lawn?" when their leaves are deep, and they're too lazy to take care of it. Obviously, it's an extra added, you know, thing that you have to spend to have a landscaper. It's a pride in your property. You know, if you want to see dirty lawns, go to Peekskill. Go to Yonkers. Let's go down to New Rochelle, where, hell, we can have garbage cups in the front lawn. You know, leaf blowers are a vital part of keeping our, let's call it, high society town now. I've been here 25 years as a homeowner, was born here. We used to all cut our lawn. Hell, when I was in high school, I cut 15 lawns, and yes, I did rake. I made $5 a lawn that took me an hour a lawn to rake them. But things have changed. I don't have time to wash my car. And I'll tell you, I use a backpack blower to dry off my car. I have a collector car. No water spots. It's the best thing. Eight-thirty in the morning, I'm out there zipping it with a cup of Dunkin' Donuts. For you people, a cup of Starbucks. And I'm going to tell you, I have a John Deere tractor with a leaf pickup. You talk about dust, it's as bad as the street sweeper going up the street when Eddie's clipping all the corners and getting every dirt that you people don't want to see, you know, you know, there's a little balance that you have to really consider. As far as maintenance of our town, we do use everything that you're trying to put down. Okay? Now, taxes are very expensive already. I don't want to see three guys in the park with a little dust balloon like your old Italian grandmother going up and down the sidewalk. They're already on Washington Avenue, Wheeler Avenue, a good 45 minutes to make it nice for everybody that wants to live in a nice town. You know, Jacob Burns, heck, they're people. They see that we got garbage on the walkway, hey, we're just lowering the standards of Pleasantville. So think about what you're trying to condone versus what you use, okay?
Could you wait until everybody's out? Second round after everybody's had their first shot.
I'm not a member of Conservation Advisory Council, but I was hoping we who, who value plants and animals and, there was something about composting, and, and the people who have these businesses could learn from each other, that we could begin to find a common ground, that we could learn, for example, maybe if the four-cylinder engines are so much better, maybe we could achieve some kind of compromise that would work out, that would lessen the health hazard. I'm sorry that you couldn't see the names of the, the researchers, the doctors, who are so concerned about the health issues of the particulate matter. Dr. Landrigan is one of them, and if I may, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about Philip Landrigan. He is professor of pediatrics and chairman of the Department of Community and Preventive Medicine of the Mount Sinai School of Medicine. He writes, "I'm also a resident of Westchester County and physicians from the department Community and Preventive Medicine that I direct at Mount Sinai." He, he is so concerned about what is happening to especially children. Dr. Landrigan is the person who pioneered research into the toxic effect of lead in gasoline, and we would not, you may never have heard of him, but he's the one who is responsible for unleaded gasoline. And he sees illnesses now, many of them chronic diseases that never used to be the cause of, of serious ill health and death, but cancer and respiratory diseases and heart disease are, they have replaced what used to be the cause for people to, to be taken to the hospital. We have acute care hospitals, but so many patients now have these chronic illnesses. And he said it's like being in a hurricane, and the particulate matter, it's, it's like trying to, to, trying, trying to, to drive in a, in a, in a tornado or a hurricane. You can't see, you don't know. The body reacts, the delicate system of hormones, the regulatory system of the body that helps us. If it works well, it helps the body get rid of toxic material, but when it's endangered by so much pollution attacking this delicate system, regulations are sometimes good and Dr. Landrigan and these, so many other, there are two women, Janice Sullivan, they, they are pleading, Landrigan himself says, "My purpose, this isn't writing to Yonkers. My purpose in writing you today is to urge an immediate ban on the use of leaf blowers in the city of Yonkers, and to urge this action on the grounds that it will protect the health of all the citizens of Yonkers." Landrigan also pioneered the, he discovered that the small, very low levels of lead in paint were causing children to die and to have all kinds of mental problems, emotional problems. He writes, "Out of passion," and he's not illiterate, he's not, he's not somebody who wants to take anyone's job away. Can't we learn from each other? I'm sure there is some way that we should go forward, not to have opposing armies. Sheila Pilefsky, she's president of the American Academy of Pediatrics, but her whole passion is to protect children. I don't want to take too much of your time. I'm hoping that we can have another meeting where we can learn from each other and find out better ways of, you're keeping your businesses, the landscapers, and people who are concerned about health issues. I'm sure you must care about your children. And about the, yeah, and the elderly. Well, nobody ever heard of people, children dying from, from the houses they lived in that had lead paint. But, you know, and before Dr. Landrigan began researching the effect of lead, the toxic effect, these are, these are serious people, and they're, they're not.
Excellent. If you have something to say, you need to say it at the podium. Somebody next? Have you finished?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Anybody?
They're clapping for you already. They're clapping for you already.
Oh gee, thanks. I'm Jim O'Connell. I live at 36 Hillside Avenue. I've been a resident of the village for 40, plus 46 years, I think it is exactly. And I just learned about this Sunday afternoon. I sent somebody an email at six o'clock this morning. There, okay, then you know my thing. I, quarter after six this evening, I got into the internet, because I normally do some research, and I didn't know I'd be coming here because I thought I had something else. This is what I found, and I just caught a little bit. Some very interesting things inherent, some of the things I have heard here, that would be fair to say, are true. I have to say though, right off the bat, to blame every medical condition on leaf blowers gets a little far-fetched. We know, for example, in, in the literature that I just glanced at, believe me, they talk about two major things, emphysema, respiratory things. Well, I think we know where emphysema generally comes from. I don't know that it comes from leaf blowers. There was a lot of research done in California, and I did find, one of the cities in California wrote what it cost them, what it would cost them if they got rid of leaf blowers in their town for the public workspeople, thousands and thousands of extra dollars a year. So there's a lot of research, and I really would like to see the other side. And I mean that sincerely because I firmly believe that there are multiple causes for most of the ailments, ailments we have, and we ought to look at some of those, not just say it's all this or all that. Emphysema, yeah. I hear people talk about asthma. Some people recognize that asthma has a psychological base. I'm a psychologist, I can tell you that. So that, come on, folks, let's look at it. Let me get a little personal, though, because when I heard this, I get kind of annoyed because I do know, and you could ban, as this gentleman over here, we're just talking about leaf blowers, that's true, but what's next? And it goes down the line, and certainly, as an individual, I ought to have some rights too. I went out and purchased last year the biggest backpack you could get, and I use it. And I use it for a couple of reasons. One, I, I use it all year. I use it to blow snow. We've had a little of that this year, and I've been out at, all about, my wife said, early in the morning, "Eight-thirty is early when you're retired." So that I've been out blowing, and everything has worked fine. But you know, the thought occurred to me that, okay, we banned leaf blowers from whatever it was, April to October, hmm, why not say if it's, they're so bad, why not ban them all year? Oh yeah, well, it might be. But let's, but let's get facts. Let's clap on that one. Some of us, like me, a little bit older, I can't do the things I used to do. At 80-plus, you find out that certain things just don't work as well as they used to. It's nice to think in terms of shoveling, forget it. You know about coronary disease? You know how many people die from coronary? Shoveling, shoveling snow, but also shoveling debris. I blow debris off my lawn. I blow debris off my driveways, off the walkways. Why? For 23, 20, 23, wait a minute, 21 grandchildren, and they sometimes come and visit, and children can slip on stuff and fall and be hurt. So on and on and on. Then I thought, wait a minute, I paid almost $600 for this thing, and someone's going to say, "Can't use it?" Let me know beforehand. Let me know beforehand. I, I wish I had a chance to really go into some of the things that were said, but I know this, that it's very, very difficult to attribute a single cause to a lot of the ills in society, and that's what I heard a lot of this evening. The research, most of the stuff in here, most of the stuff... The research, most of the stuff in here, most of the stuff, some of the things in here, they were comments on, and they cited no citation. And that always bothers me. They didn't cite the study per se, they didn't cite the N on this study, they didn't cite the statistical treatment used, they didn't cite the population used. They are all things that should be looked at in a study. You know as well as I do, that you can use statistics to prove a lot of things. Remember, you know the thing about liars and all that. So please, if you're going to do something, let's get all the facts out. And I do hope there is another chance, because I would like to have done a little more research so I could be a little bit more knowledgeable about what's happened. I know I was annoyed when I heard, so good luck.
Did you have something? Your next question?
No, go ahead. Again, Mark Fabia, five Woodland Road. I have a landscape business here in Pleasantville. Like the gentleman said, if that city in California was going to cost them tremendous amounts of money by not using blowers, why would you think it not affect a small landscape company? You know, in this economy, you know, you have to watch every penny, every dollar. You know, it's just, you know, it's just a lot of strain on businesses today. Another question is, is this restriction going to be enforced for government entities in Pleasantville, like the school system, the grounds crews, and the towns' workers? Can you answer that?
I can't speak to the question of the school district, but I think the tenor of the board is if we were to consider this and enact such a ban, it would apply to the government. The school district may or may not have the right to operate independently, I'm not sure about that. Certainly, my personal opinion is if we were to enact it, the government would have to live with it.
Okay. So then it will cost the town tremendous amount of money and labor.
Got to look at that.
Okay. Also, many of the arguments tonight that were set, you know, basically subjective in our opinions, I haven't heard any scientific fact. You know, doctors, doctors and professors do have their own agenda also, and unless there's scientific data and studies done and are presented, you know, it's just opinion. Also, you know, I give a lot of respect to the conservation group for going ahead and trying to do this type of work and trying to help our town out. I really appreciate that. But I also, you know, an environmentalist, you know, don't make a landscaper look like a villain because we use a piece of equipment. I take offense to that, that if you came to my yard, my yard is a manicured yard. I guarantee I have more wildlife on my yard than any of your yards. I have a pond with fish that attracts butterflies, birds, I have bird feeders, we have all kinds of wildlife in my house. And I do have a manicured property, okay? As far as mulching mowers, they do not work, okay? Mulching mowers will chop the leaves up, and you'll have layers of leaves on top of the lawn, and I defy you to show me pictures that they worked, okay? We have used them, we've tried them on big commercial mowers that have mulching mowers with eighteen horsepower engines. During the heavy growing season, the grass and leaves do not mulch up. It leaves the property a mess. I defy you to try to get paid at the end of that month by that customer that's paying you to maintain their property, okay? Everybody has a right to keep their property the way they want. Again, you know, I just, again, my company, regardless whether there's a blower ban or not, I'll still stay in business. It's not going to affect me. It's going to affect the homeowner, it's going to affect the customer. If I have to put more men on the truck and more time on their property, raking leaves, taking them away and doing that work, it does, the biggest expense is labor. The biggest, and we don't use blowers a lot during that time period. The biggest time that we use blowers are in the spring and in the fall for cleanups. During the summer, the blowers are not used often. It's the last five minutes on a property. You're listening to lawnmowers working.
Look, look, excuse me, come on, these exchanges are not helpful.
Thank you, thank you very much. Again, I take offense that, you know, I'm made to look like a villain. You know, maybe not me singled out personally, but landscapers and homeowners that decide to use this equipment, okay? Thank you very much.
I'm Matthew Brennesholtz from Seventy Sunnyside Avenue. You know, with all due respect, you're different than all the other landscapers in Pleasantville. The landscape company that does, our next door neighbor who has a sixty by hundred-and-forty foot lot, he has three leaf blowers, this is out of season, not during leaf season, he has three leaf blowers on that small lot, and they work for about twenty minutes. And then he does the people across the street who have a bigger lot. And these are people that are using, this landscaper uses, he collects the grass, so he doesn't, you know, he's not trying to get the grass down, he needs to mulch it. He's collecting it year-round, always. And I think it's been, you know, we sort of lost track of, one of the main reasons for this is the huge amount of dust these leaf blowers blow up. It's just immense. And with all due respect for people that can't rake their own lawn because of injury or age, there are more people in Pleasantville with asthma than there are people with injuries that keep them from raking their lawn. It's, you know, I didn't hear the CAC presentation talk about emphysema. It's asthma, it's the dust, it's the asthma. And also, they had a lot of references in there. The problem is, the lights were turned on, and there were so many references, they were in such a fine print. I am sure they are willing to give you a copy of the presentation with all the references in it. Have they given one to the village board, a printed copy?
No, not yet. Right, we have a lot of the material, not in that same document.
Okay, so the village board has the references, and I suspect the CAC had given, can you give this gentleman a copy too?
The whole presentation?
The whole, I mean, I'm not on the CAC, so I can't promise it, but she just said she'd be glad to give you the whole presentation.
Can I suggest, please, if it's okay with you, that we could post it on the village website and anybody could get it? Okay, so shoot it if you would, shoot it to Patty, and you can put it up on the village website.
I know, my wife's on the CAC, and she says, they talked to the landscapers in Scarsdale, and apparently the landscapers just adopted, you know, they're, the people in Scarsdale are still paying and they still have tidy lawns. You know, it really has not, talking about citations, I would like to see some sort of proof that this would be an economic hardship on landscapers. In that it's just, you know, three guys with leaf blowers on a small lot, that's, that's time-consuming, those are expensive machines. What's, what's going on here? And it looks worse when they're done. So, okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Anyway, thank you.
We've kept you long enough, you had us comment on this subject, right?
Hi, I'm Terri Codway, I live at sixteen Parkway Terrace. I actually came for several reasons tonight. This has been very interesting. I will say that I've, I've looked into research on both sides. I think that we have to be careful in saying that everything grow green and wild. When you are in a populated area, it is important to maintain some balance and to clean your properties, to clean your land. We know that Westchester County has a significant problem with Lyme's disease and with West Nile virus, that both of these problems are very much related to clippings, leaves. We've been told by the county for several years now that we really need to keep our areas clean, it is important. I sat in on some of the meetings with the Sawmill River Coalition over here at Pace University, very interesting in watching how going green and nature can get out of control. Along our Sawmill River now, we see the biggest example of that in Westchester County, in the vines that have taken over the trees and are actually choking and destroying nature in those areas. So there has to really be a balance, I think, especially where people live, it is important to keep your lawns clean. It looks good environmentally, it is friendly. I think if it's done, I'm a homeowner, my husband and children and I maintain our lawns. We have used leaf blowers responsibly, we've purchased a leaf blower that meets all of the federal regulations. I think the homeowners in Pleasantville that are using the leaf blowers are homeowners that love and respect Pleasantville and their selves and their health and their children. And I think our professionals in Pleasantville, they are already mandated by regulations for the equipment, and I think that we should respect their expertise. So I think, yes, it is important to look at both sides, but I do think that leaf blowers, when used responsibly by our responsible homeowners and professionals, do have a place in our village and in our county.
Bill Chivone again, Sarls Lane. Again, I want to commend the young lady back there before who stood up here and said that she would like to see in another meeting some common ground. And I was very happy to hear that because I do hear a lot of disagreeing or agreeing views here, but I also have to say, I'm sitting over there and I hear comments in the back while people are standing up here and it's not nice. I hear a woman over here humming over here when somebody else is speaking, that's not nice. That's really not nice, and that's not the way we should be respectful, we should be respectful to each other. Don't you agree? Well, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here, I had to hear that, that's part of it, it was brought out, yes it is, I'm sorry, don't interrupt me, please. Anyway, I would just like to know, this group over here, to be honest, I really haven't heard of them in Pleasantville before, and I would like to know, you know, who has made them in charge of bringing the whole leaf blower on, on the table here? And can we have some information about the group? You know, to see who they are, where they come from, and the base of this group?
The Conservation Advisory Council is a longstanding entity which is a council and panelled by the village board, they've existed for many, many years. Its members are appointed by the village board, and they are a group that provides advice on subjects that are referred to then either by the board or the planning commission, but also are themselves the progenitors of proposals and ideas that, of which this is one, so.
So you're saying that this, the leaf blowing issue is something brought up by the committee themselves, not through the board?
The Conservation Advisory Council came to us and proposed this, presented quite some of the material you've seen tonight, and we propose to have this meeting tonight, and we, I think, am going to propose to have another one, as the number have suggested, a little bit down the road, when people have had a chance to let this percolate a little bit. There is no resolution on the table at the moment to do this, and no vote scheduled to do it. We are airing out the issues. CAC expressed the desire to enact such a ban. It was obvious that there would be people with a counter view, and tonight's the first shot at hearing everybody's views on the subject. You know, to your, to your comment about a respectful environment, you know, all of us get up early and go to bed late, trying to find ways to make this room and this government a place where everybody can be heard respectfully. And all of us sit here at moments listening to people with whom we heartily disagree or heartily agree, but the experience of doing that...
Posting landscape waste, applying integrated pest management, this is the direction of all the technical people who specify large projects in this country, in the world. America is actually behind the Europeans when it comes to this. They're trying to keep an environment that really is sustainable, that's the key word. Creating wildlife habitat, removing and not installing invasive plants, and it goes on, but here, using mulching motors to significantly reduce yards, yard waste generation, fertilizer needs, and water consumption through the retention of organic matter. This is recognized. It's not just the opinion of just a couple of homeowners. This is something that the entire engineering community is striving towards and recognizing through organizations such as LEED and a few others. So I just wanted to toss that out there, just trying to put the framework on it, so just consider that, please.
Can I, did you have something, Helen?
All right, just a quick thing, and then I think we should probably move on, I had a couple of thoughts about where to go from here.
Hi, Helen Muira, three Hayes Hill Road. Just quickly, I just want to straighten out a few things. This is not about banning leaf blowers, it's about restricting their use to the fall or possibly the fall in the spring. This is not about just noise, this is about... With a copy to a fellow named Mike Cotton, who's the regional traffic engineer. Both of those people are the people that will facilitate, according to Dave Parker, the closure of the slip ramp, assuming the village is expending its own resources and doing that. The state said that they will not contribute financially to that project. That was something that they made clear to the village a long time ago, but they would not object to the village taking on that particular work under their permit. So bottom line is, we have to apply for the state permits to close the slip ramp, that's a second, secondary issue to this particular discussion tonight.
But we can do so.
There's been every indication that the state will allow you to do that, yes.
All right, so...
Which I think, you know, that's, that's just coincident, that basically collaborates what's been said all along. I wasn't here that, that was the interim period when I wasn't an administrator here, when a lot of these discussions took place. But there was a concerted effort by the residents of Parkway Terrace to petition the state and the village to close that slip ramp, and they have that information and they're aware of it, and they did not object to it, they just said the village has to progress this project.
So this is just a public hearing for the purpose of, if there's any objections from neighbors or people...
It's a required public hearing.
Right, but I just don't want, I just don't want it to be misrepresented.
We don't have to vote on it.
Well, we have the resolution on tonight.
We do have it. And that is, but we don't have an affirmative, definitely in writing, that we can close the slip ramp, because I know that was something that was important to vote Jonathan and I voted.
You have, you're going to have to spend some money to get that permit, I mean, you have to come up with an engineering design, DOT has to approve it, and you have to let a contract out or whatever it is it's going to be to do this job. You know, so there's, there's more to follow. Right now, you know, if this is progressing, it's, it's okay to progress with making at least the direction of traffic one way, with the understanding that, you know, you'll pursue, you know, closure of a slip ramp, you don't necessarily...
We can make it contingent upon the slip ramp closing.
You can do that. I would suggest you close the hearing, I mean, there's really no comments, you know, against this particular...
There's nobody against it here.
Right.
Unless you're against it also.
We have the resolution on tonight, I mean, we can discuss the rest of the resolutions when we come to it, but would I be correct in assuming that you guys would prefer to see the street one way even if the slip ramp were not to be closed? I mean, there's no reason to think it won't be at the moment, right?
That's my impression. Yeah, that's my impression.
Well, that's a completely different conversation, as far as I'm concerned. If that slip ramp's not closed, I have no interest to see that street one way.
Okay.
Because I think it completely defeats the purpose for having done it, which is to make it safer for pedestrians.
I would disagree with you about that, but I do understand that point.
So it won't make it safer for pedestrians.
I think it will make it safer for pedestrians either way. It will remove one impediment from a condition that has several. It will also allow us to improve that side of the street, along the Sawmill side, recognizing that, as you rightly point out, you still end up at this slip ramp like you're crossing a street after having gotten to it at least in a safer condition and in a better, tidier, more reasonable condition for the neighbors who live there.
Oh, there's nothing to prevent us from doing that anyways, if we think it should be done.
Well, there isn't enough room to do it with a two-way street and to maintain parking, off-street parking for the number of cars that are around that street, that's, that's the issue.
I didn't understand that ever to be the issue, there's plenty of room now, they just want it to be... They just want it to be a little bit more cleaned up and a little bit more tarmac there to accommodate that more. But if it was two ways, there was still a plan in place to be able to do that.
I mean, I suppose you're right to the extent that some improvements could be made even two-way. I think that the ease of doing them is improved by the one way.
I don't disagree with that at all. I think you're absolutely right. Almost by definition, you're right. But I don't think that creating a walk or a easier path for the kids that are coming to and from West Core, they're coming to the village, and taking them past an open slip ramp is something that, you know, I want to be encouraging to do.
Well, they're doing it now.
We're not encouraging to do it, though.
Well, I mean, that sort of goes to our discussion earlier today. So at any, be that as it may, I think when it comes, we have this resolution on as the second resolution of the night. And when we come to that, we can either table it or vote it up or down.
Well, I, we don't want to do that if it's going to delay this process, but if we could, if we can be specific.
I guess, I'm also inclined to think that if, it strikes with our case to push this table up.
I'm happy to do a contingent on analysis, I mean, look, if it's fifty grand to get the permit to close the slip ramp...
Shouldn't be that much, but...
But now you're introducing a whole other aspect to it that I didn't understand, that we couldn't just put barrels and close the slip ramp in some common sense kind of manner that doesn't cost a fortune to do.
Like they closed the Sawmill Parkway.
Like they called, like God forbid they closed the Sawmill Parkway.
Like they closed the Parkway and throw the red barrels.
Patty, is there any suggestion that a permit for a very small project like this is anything significant?
No, it's just time. I don't think it's, you know, I mean, it's just very difficult to get DOT to focus on something so small. I can't get them to put the fourth walk cycle in by Manville Road and Pleasantville Road that's been missing for five years. It's just, you know...
But frustrating though, that is, it requires them to come and do something.
Yes, yes, yes.
This does not require them to come and do anything. All they have to do is say, "Go ahead, Pleasantville."
That, yes, it's true, but it goes through a couple of layers. But it's time. It's not, it's more time than money, I would suggest. I mean, because what is it going to take to do this? You know, some academy and...
So, or those Jersey barriers or whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be, it all depends. I don't know what they would require, but it's not a very sophisticated project for sure, either way. It shouldn't be that difficult, no.
So in which case, if we put in contingencies, a couple contingencies, and we can still pass this?
Are we actually going to make it one way until, are we going to wait until we close this?
Well, that's what Jonathan is suggesting.
We, right, so why, with respect, why pass it until we close the slip ramp?
Well, that's a new suggestion. You have to understand.
It's really not new. We've been talking about it for...
I mean, I'm happy to pass it personally, but pass this anyway, but I understand your ...
Yeah, we thought we would have an answer that it's definitely a go by then. But my question is, is that...
Well, it is. I mean, the answer is, yes, the state will allow you to close the slip ramp, it just takes their, it's their approval, you know, and their permit that...
Well, can we temporarily close it? Can we just, can we say local, is we're going to block it up?
But can we write into this resolution that this is contingent on the slip ramp closing?
Why not then, why not then wait until the slip ramp's closed and then pass the...
But as the mayor said, it was almost...
Well, I, does the state need a resolution from us saying that this is our intention and this is what we're doing, close the slip ramp? We need your final permission. Do they need some resolution from us saying that this is, this is what we voted on doing? We are making this a one-way street, close the slip ramp? Do they need that?
No, they don't need that. They don't care if you keep it two-way and close the slip ramp.
Okay.
I mean, they're not concerned about the direction of traffic.
Yeah, but do we have more leverage by saying, "Look, we have a local law to change this thing pending your approval"?
Right.
Can you, you know, does it give us additional leverage to force them to push it through a little bit?
Right, we're moving on.
It may. I mean, it's not going to hurt.
It's Patrick, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it may. It's not going to hurt to tell them that, you know, it's contingent.
So I, because I would prefer to pass this, but I feel, you know, that it needs to be contingent on the slip ramp. So if we could just write that into that and just, just not to...
Then you'll suggest that when we come to the resolution.
It's my resolution.
Any other comments in the public hearing? No motion to close the public hearing?
We're commenting in our whole public hearing.
Second.
It's a private public hearing.
Second, second.
All in favor?
As long as we get to the coal line.
The public hearing is closed. Now to our resolutions, number 2011-4, establishing standard workday reporting for elected officials. Perhaps since this refers to Trustee Lopez, we should start with you, Mindy, in which case the other one won't be used.
Be it resolved that the Village of Pleasantville hereby establishes the following as standard workdays for elected officials and will report the following day's work to the state local employees retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the village clerk of the Village of Pleasantville. Trustee Lopez, standard workday six from 4:05, 10 through 4:04, 11 participates in employers' timekeeping system, that's, I guess the end is a no. Days per month is 12.2, or is that hours?
Days.
Days per month is 12.2. Acting Justice Susan Galata, term begins 4/6/09 to 4/2/12, does not participate in the employers' timekeeping system. Days per month is .11.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is, this is a workday reporting required for the New York State Employee Retirement System and it is entirely based on the records submitted by the officials in question. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, more than a break. Jonathan, 2011-5.
No, this is...
Okay, fine, go back to Steve. All right, bounce that back.
Resolved, Board Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville hereby approve a local law amending Chapter 173 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-52, Schedule 4, One-Way Streets as follows. Amending Chapter 173 Vehicle and Traffic for Parkway Terrace, direction of travel north and west, limits from Broadway Road to Manville Road as a one-way street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments?
Well, I'd like you to read that this is contingent on closing of the slip ramp onto the Sawmill River Parkway. Is that the time to make that comment?
It is. Is that acceptable?
I would agree with that.
Acceptable to the mover?
Yes.
Okay, so the resolution is amended to include that contingency? For the record, I would approve the resolution without that, although I certainly am willing to vote for it with it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 2011-6.
Resolved that the pre-check registered dated January 24, 2011, covering checks number 68339 through 68496 have been reviewed and are hereby approved as listed below. The general fund for $196,239.94, miscellaneous fund as zero, water fund $104,614, capital fund $26,576, the wreckage fund $12,517, the pool fund a whopping $175, trust and agency fund for $2,110, totaling $342,232.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, January 10, 2011, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, no further. Steve.
Result of Board Trustees hereby appoints the following election inspectors to the March 15, 2011 Village Election. Salvatore Talio, captain of elections, $275. Ruth Merton, election inspector, $225. Margaret Limatoni, election inspector, $225. Connie Mizuwa, election inspector, $225. And further appoints the following as alternate elections inspectors. Dorothy Carnabucci, Connie Henley, and Giovanna Talio, at a salary of $225.
Is there a second?
Second.
This would be for the annual village election taking place on Tuesday, March 15. Three positions are up for vote. The trustee seats held by Mindy and Brian, and the village justice seat currently held by Judge Kirk.
I just want, is this the prevailing rate in Westchester County? Or is this rate controlled by the county or villages or...
Which, I'm sorry...
The rate that we pay, I'm just curious.
Election inspector.
No, it's set by the village board.
It's set by the village board.
Right.
And this is from the hours of what?
6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Fifteen hours.
6:00 AM to 9:00 PM for fifteen hours.
Right, we have to get there a little early instead of...
And the alternates are just in case...
And you got to stay a little late to count, so it's...
Well, especially if you have to do them by hand.
Yeah, the polling hours are six to nine, but people usually report by 5:30 and they leave about 10:00.
The alternates are just in case one of the other ones can't make it.
Yes.
They're not paid unless they work.
Julie doesn't expect to have a full staff.
I think we should pay them more.
Okay. Enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Me. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies in the amount of $41,063 per year for a three-year period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe this, Tyler being the makers of Munis or accounting system?
Yes, Tyler is our provider of our municipal software and accounting system. We have a number of packages with Munis that require annual subscriptions for maintenance and for renewal and for updates and upkeep. And you can see them listed here, everything from the accounting and fixed assets to human resources and payroll, reporting and licensing and accounts receivable and utility billing. This is a three-year agreement that was negotiated by our village treasurer. It was originally proposed to be, I think, an effective increase of 4.8 percent. She was able to get them to agree to 4.1 percent. And it's unfortunately one of those, one of those required elements when you don't have an IT person on staff, you have to have, you know, the assistance of these software companies to maintain and upgrade the systems, so...
And mind you, we'd have to pay it. Even so, I mean, these are licensing requirements, creature piece modules, right?
There are. There are concurrent user requirements as well for licensing, yes. That's correct.
Can you, go ahead.
I just, I thought that when you, normally when you buy software and you actually pay for it, you get the licensing agreement sort of for life. This is really, every year we have to pay a licensing agreement for software that we purchased? No, we're not leasing the software.
I think actually we are.
Are we? Can we buy?
I don't know the original intent with Munis. This goes back to 2000 or 2002. I can look at the contract.
I do not believe that Munis sells their software. It's a big package and they make their money with these annual licensing fees.
I guess they do.
And of course, it's golden handcuffs in many respects because it's a difficult venture to get yourself out of a package of this kind. And the more of the modules you use, for example, the last item here, citizen self-service, is the module that's connected to the website that allows you to query your tax bill and soon to pay it online.
True, which would be a new package for us.
Those are all, but the reality is, if we were to decide next year we'd rather be with one of the three or four other players in the world of municipal accounting, it would be a major undertaking to make that decision.
No doubt they get it.
And as a result, they get you with golden handcuffs.
I mean, that sort of goes to my question that I often ask here. I mean, are there, has anyone else cropped up in the Albany world with, you know, some bright young face with a cheaper way to go about all this for a small town like ours? For example, let's go down to animal licenses. What the animal license price is costing us on this, $2,478, is that right? I'm just wondering how much money we take in on animal licenses?
That's a three-year, right?
How much money we take in three years on animal licenses? I would say it's not over $24,000. I mean...
Twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred. I just think that this is, if you look at what we're paying for maintenance, $125,000, that's just a lot of money for...
Over three years, correct.
Well, still...
Yes.
Still, it's a lot of money. And I just can't help but think that in this world of, in this digital world, somebody else for a very small town like ours isn't stepping forward with a cheaper way to go about this.
Well, they're, they may be, but they have to have a good understanding of New York State accounting rules. One of the problems is that we've had a number of vendors talk to us about online payments and the like. We're always trying to get, you know, we're wedded to Munis for a lot of things, but anything we could do outside of Munis, we try to get other quotes. But they're not familiar with New York State banking regulations. They don't have the proper architecture in their software products. I think that in this...
So is this the only game?
There are two. There's Munis and KVS. KVS is a very popular municipal accounting software package for municipalities of our size. But I don't believe the savings are going to be, you know, there and realized. Prokun uses KVS, Austin, some other communities. It's a popular system.
And is there...
But there aren't many out there.
And are they paying dramatically less? I mean, how is it, I wonder what they're...
I could find that out, but I, from what I understand, no, they're not. It's just as expensive and once you're in it, it's almost impossible to stop.
Do they require, does the, does New York State require us to deliver any of these, any of these areas that we have here and these programs? Are they mandated by the state in any way to, for us to deliver these?
Or drop them?
Well, not only that format, you know, they may, they may require certain reports for accounting reasons.
The Crystal reports are tailored to reflect the types of reporting that the state requires under GASB.
That state requires, yes.
And so we use Crystal to manipulate this financial accounting data because otherwise it just spills out like a whole bunch of numbers. And even to give the board your budget reports, we use this Crystal program.
Is this a work, leverage?
No, I'm just thinking, like, if the state, if there's any type of, this is a refunded mandate, if this is, if any of these things we require, like, do we get a grant or any type of match that...
But what I could tell you is that if we didn't have municipal automated accounting software, we would have more employees.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, I agree with you. I know what this can do.
This forty-one thousand dollars we pay a year saves us...
I'm just, I was just curious to see if we could...
A tremendous amount of time and effort.
It's partly, as Patty mentioned, in the absence of an IT department.
Right.
Where dependent on outside packages and among the things Tyler does for us, correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, is that they are backing up our Munis files...
Yes.
To their remote servers.
That's true. We don't keep any of those files.
So we now have big-time cloud backup, which is essential for us and would otherwise be difficult to get. I mean, I share, you just look at the accounting piece and you realize, you know, the annual cost of the accounting piece is around a small piece of it when you add all those other things in there. You know, it could be done cheaper. I don't think it could necessarily be done cheaper without somebody more under the hood of IT on our own staff.
Well, I do have a question on that, and I don't disagree. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
Go ahead.
But how much of this, how much of this is actually licensing and how much of it is IT? You know, because it begs the question, if we had an IT person, what does this bill go to?
This is software only.
Yeah, I don't think this, I don't think this, I don't think this bill would change.
Well, we're talking about creating programs and maybe developing, you know, programs for the village that would integrate into one, you know, unified accounting system.
Okay, so you're talking about having software developers?
That's right. This is all software.
Well, not necessarily developers, but we could buy a payroll package off the shelf and run it as an entity and not pay licensing fees at all. But how we feed that back into the government accounting system so that it feeds into our financial reports, I'm sure it's all doable, but it starts to be the province of people who, you know, know about open database transfers and the like. You know, it's, it's--
All right.
One question I would have Patty and I, I think we shouldn't stop this resolution, is we have three concurrent users for all these things. Are some of these things--
Are they three years?
No, the quantity is for three years. It's just the price. The concurrent users, we have as many as twenty-five licensed under here. We have on--
Well, I guess my question there is, is there any savings if there are fewer concurrent users?
I'd ask Mary to look at that, too. I don't know what we are looking at.
And are we paying, you know, is there any savings there if we have, if we're in a category of more concurrent users than we could need? So I throw that out just as, you know, something to be looked at.
Can I just ask one question? I don't see the billing department.
They're not in it.
They don't have a Munis package.
They don't.
Not at this point. They have a code package and they have a permit package. We're looking at it.
So there's no way to integrate into this estimating?
It's really not necessary.
Well, they process a lot of money.
If we could capture the escrow account system in a better way, that'd be great. And it clearly needs to be automated, which it isn't now, whether it ought to be done through Munis or kind of as an offline piece is another core question.
Right, because I think that the current program that they're using now may have a module like that. I don't know if they capture that.
I don't think they're using--
No, but they're looking at, they're looking at some options.
Some of these billing departments, they support their whole operation through fees and so on, not escrow stuff, but fees, billing permit fees. And I know some are actually a surplus to the municipalities that they're in. So, you know, the revenue stream would be interesting to see, you know, integrated into the rest of this and into our budget to see what, you know, what goes on.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what's happening is they are receiving these applications and the checks that come with them, and they're bringing up to finance, and finances keep punching them into Munis, am I right?
That's right. They are entered into--
Their batch process is--
They're entered into--
I mean, the money is getting into the Munis, but the--
The tracking isn't there with the program.
The tracking, especially the tracking of escrow, is happening offline.
Yeah.
And that's the hard part.
Well, I just throw it out.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Patty just asked about that kind of current issue.
I will, thank you. I noticed that, too.
Two thousand eleven.
Result that the board trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby accept an anonymous donation in the amount of two thousand dollars for citizen, senior citizens' programs and services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you to anonymous. Very much appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Brian?
Result that the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following budget amendments. This is to fund over-budget accounts, transferring twenty-eight hundred and fifteen dollars from technology consulting to assessor software support, transferring three hundred and fifty dollars from engineer contractual to miscellaneous charges debt services, nine hundred and ninety dollars from technology consulting to administrative staff software support, two thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars from engineer contractual to law contractual, and four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from leaf collection outside service to shade trees contractual for a total transfer of ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Patty, these are all--
These are, yes.
--overfunded accounts.
That's correct.
Helping out underfunded accounts.
Yes.
No change in the overall budget.
Does not, does not increase the budget, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Is there any new bits? Are we on or not on? We're on? For those who are watching, we had some technical difficulties a couple of places, and we may have lost our video or audio feed at various points. I understand we're back now, so whatever pieces of it have been captured will also be replayed on PC TV and on the web, although there may be some gaps, and we apologize for that, which is just a glitch that occasionally happens. So with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned the meeting of Monday, January twenty-four. Work sessions on the thirty-first and the seventh, and our next regular meeting on February fourteen. Thank you all, and stay warm.